Wait till the clerk tells me. Wow. Tom's got the right idea.
Haven't talked to you in a long time. Things good? Good, good. I got to talk a little bit briefly in the restroom actually to the waterworks guy. Seems really great.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, seems fantastic.
Did you see they just won their award for the best tasting water in the southeast? They posted it on social media today. Yeah.
That lead says nice things about it.
Council members.
You all ready?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Good evening, everybody. It's good to see so many happy people here tonight for some good things and some very familiar faces. And our agenda has been published. This is the June 8th meeting of Mount Pleasant Town Council. Item number one on the agenda is the prayer by Rabbi Revson, followed by the pledge of allegiance led by Mayor Potem Tom O'Rourke. Please stand.
Heavenly Father, as we commence with the sacred task of municipal governance, we pray that you still the hearts of our town leaders and inspire high moral character and spiritual maturity. So that among the many voices which cry out to them every day, may they hear your voice above all others. As we look to our mayor, councilmen and women, department heads, first responders, for guidance and especially during times of crisis, inspire them to lead from their knees. And by that simple grace, bring each one of us to our knees before your divine throne in recognition of your power and love. And let us say amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion to approve in a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda is approved. Item number four is public hearings, awards, and presentations. We will ask our staff to start rolling this. We have quite a few to roll through tonight, and they're all happy and good.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and members of council. It is my pleasure to introduce you to the graduating seniors of the 2021 Youth Council. As you know, the mission of the Youth Council is to empower youth through providing the opportunity to serve, develop leadership skills, and grow to become engaged and responsible citizens. These teens took on the arduous task of starting a new program in our community and managed to accomplish many of their goals despite a global pandemic. I am proud of all they have accomplished, particularly in the field of teen mental health awareness. And I sincerely appreciate their service to their peers and to their community. I've learned so much from them already, and I know their valuable work will continue on for many years. So without further delay, I'd like to introduce you to the following graduating seniors. Josie, if you'll join me, Abby, and Eliza. Yep, either way. So Josie, you met, many of you met at our committee meeting last week. She is graduating from Academic Magnet. She will be attending the College of William &amp; Mary as a Monroe scholar, majoring in international relations, minoring in Spanish and dance, also pursuing a pre-law track with the plans to attend law school after college. And Eliza was, I failed to mention, Josie was our chair of the Youth Council, and Eliza was our vice chair. Eliza will be attending the University of Georgia Honors College, majoring in political science, also with hopes to attend law school after college. And Abby here is graduating from Wando High School. She will be attending Barnard College at Columbia University as an art history major. And we had three members who were unable to join us tonight. Just briefly introduce them. Isabel Raykova, who is graduating from School of the Arts. She will be attending Clemson University as a health science major with plans to become a physical therapist. Miles Chisum is graduating from Wando High School. He will also be attending Clemson University and double majoring in biology and economics with the plan to work in the biotechnology field. And Walker Carswell is graduating from Porter Gald, and he will be attending West Point on a football scholarship. So please join me in thanking these amazing teams. Stay there, stay there.
Are we standing or sitting? I guess we stand. Martine, you want us standing or sitting? You want us standing or sitting? Standing is good, okay.
Thank you all. Next, we will have the blessing of the Fleet Charity Partners check presentations for Carolina Children's Charity and East Cooper Community Outreach.
So what a strange year it's been in the world of events. But we were thrilled this year to have an amazing blessing of the fleet. It was really, you know, we had our Christmas parade, but the blessing of the fleet was the first time this year that we were really able to all get out during the day and really celebrate and have a wonderful time. And so we are so grateful to all of you for your support of all of our events over the years. And the blessing of the fleet is near and dear to my heart. I love the Magwood family like my own. We've become very close over the past decade. Thirty-four years ago, the Magwood family brought together the Shem Creek Shrimping and Fishing Communities with the town of Mount Pleasant to start the Blessing of the Fleet and Seafood Festival here in Mount Pleasant. Ann Magwood and other wives used to cook the shrimp, sell the sodas, stack them in their garage, and put their kids to work supporting the cause. Thanks to Trustee and Jennifer and their sisters for everything they've done over the many years that we've been doing this. The award-winning festival has become one of the Low Country's favorite pastimes, while also educating our community and visitors about the importance of supporting local fishermen and honoring this important part of our town's heritage. The season is now open, so I hope you're all stocking up. Seventeen vessels were blessed this year, including the lead Coast Guard boat, as well as the former Winds of Fortune, which we were very pleasantly surprised to have the new owners from North Carolina bring her down to honor Captain Wayne Magwood. If you were there, it was a very special moment, and I hope you're all able to see it. Each registered Shem Creek vessel owner received $500 for a total of $7,000 supporting our local shrimping and fishing fleet. We encourage you all to ask local restaurants where their seafood comes from and help us promote the local and wild American seafood movement by posting to social media with the hashtags #JustAsk and #ExperienceMP when you find restaurants who serve local seafood. As this festival has grown, so has its need for community support on event day and even before. Volunteers are essential to our ability to bring this festival to life each year. Our local nonprofit partners put in a lot of sweat equity in return for receiving the net proceeds of the event. This year's beneficiaries, East Cooper Community Outreach and the Carolina Children's Charity, helped us fill more than 100 volunteer shifts. I should also note that many town employees in this room and beyond also volunteer their time every year because it really is a time-honored tradition that we all love to pitch in and see the community respond to. So every, just about every department in our town is represented on event day, and we're very grateful for that. Our nonprofits were great to work with. We've worked with them on this event in the past, and we actually rolled them over from last year. As you know, last year was the first time in my 10 years we didn't have an actual festival. So we had even more to celebrate and especially more to commemorate with the untimely passing of Captain Wayne Magwood in this past year. A little bit about the charities. East Cooper Community Outreach provides safety net services to low-income neighbors while empowering them to create a better future for themselves, their families, and communities. Founded in the aftermath of Hurricane Hugo, Echo was formed as an emergency relief effort and has since grown into a permanent resource for families in financial distress, the elderly and disabled, the uninsured and underinsured, the unemployed and underemployed, single mothers and veterans. God knows all of those groups have needed extra help this year. The organization serves families who are in both situational poverty and generational poverty. Echo's programs are designed to fit, to best fulfill the community's unmet needs while encouraging self-sufficiency. That's a key word in my house. My kids hate it. Healthy living and financial resilience. Over the last few decades, Echo has expanded its programs to adapt to the changing economic environment, especially in the areas of health and education. One of Echo's overall goals is to provide low-income families with holistic wraparound services and support to help clients address the underlying causes that have contributed to their situations. The agency's impact has helped to enhance the social and economic growth of the Mount Pleasant community and continues to enhance the quality of life for its residents. Echo fills an otherwise unmet need for the local underserved population, providing necessary public services to thousands of struggling families every year. Carolina Children's Charity is one that is near and dear to our fire department, who works closely with them to help raise funds. And they assist Low Country children with diagnosed birth defects and/or childhood diseases to ensure that they have access to medically necessary items or services. Since the charity's founding in 1987, it has provided assistance to thousands of Low Country children with birth defects or other disabling diseases and services totaling more than $4 million. Carolina Children's Charity raises funds with three major special events: the boot drive, the cornhole tournament, and band blast, and 5K run/family fun walk. And with the help of Low Country firefighters, Mount Pleasant included, and many other groups, they are able to provide assistance to so many special children in our community. If I could please call up the Magwood family first, Ann and Tessie and Jennifer. This has been a very emotional festival for them, as you might imagine. But I believe we pulled up, pulled off an amazing tribute to their dad, who really was instrumental with Ann in the beginning of this festival. So it wouldn't exist without these ladies right here and everything they've done over the past three decades. So I also would like to call up Echo's Development and Marketing Director, Dawn Squires, as well as their Executive Director, Stephanie Kelly, and Carolina Children's Charity Executive Director, Sonya Biao, and Board Member, Chris Wallace. We are proud to have these organizations serving and representing our town. We had a terrific event this year, and we're thrilled to present them, each with a check for more than $4,800 to help their missions. Yes. We'll have a little photo. You want to go that way? I just get happy when I can turn around and not have my rear end. Thank you so much. Thank you for all your help.
I appreciate it very much, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Where would you like us?
Come right up here. Military does have to do that. So this is Lieutenant Colonel Rachel Hunter. I'm going to let her introduce her cohorts in a minute. But we are here to celebrate two and a half years of hard work, a lot of talk, a lot of patience, a lot of understanding, but a love for Mount Pleasant, our saltwater environs, our wildlife habitat, our shrimping industry and all of that. You all know about Crab Bay and that Crab Bay restoration is part of the Post-45 Harbor Division. And, right, Johnny? And we're all very pleased to have that. And when we saw the first plan for where it was going to go, the town went to the Corps of Engineers before you were there, and we said, "Could you move it a little bit?" And the Corps said, "Yeah, we'll move it a little bit." And then we went back to the Corps and we said, "Could you move it a little more?" And they said, "Well, we'll see, we'll see." So time passed and time passed. This spring, we were on a Zoom call, and the Corps of Engineers said, "We have some very good use for the town of Mount Pleasant. Not only will we move it where you asked us to, we're going to move it further away from the Mount Shem Creek than you asked us to." That is something to celebrate. That is teamwork. That is listening to the community and working together. So this council passed last month, I know this is exciting, but it's Resolution R21054. This is a big moment.
It is.
I know. And so it has the whereas and everything, but what it gets to is whereas the town, the United States Army Corps of Engineers, the South Carolina Department of Natural Resources, with the assistance of the South Carolina Congressional delegation, reviewed the project alternatives, and with great cooperation, a plan was implemented which will allow all parties to meet their project goals. Now therefore be it resolved that the town council of Mount Pleasant hereby supports the agreed fund placement of Crab Bay. For this restoration project, this successful result is due to the collaboration of the Corps of Engineers, the Congressional delegation, the town, and the Department of Natural Resources. Rachel, thank you so much. I have looked forward to this moment for a long, long time.
As have I.
Let me hand you this, and please introduce your replacement, Aunt Jeff, your coworker who worked with us and labored with us a little bit.
Well, and thank you, Mayor Meehan, and thank you to the council for inviting us here tonight. Before I do that, I just want to very quickly just re- the thrill that we had being able to celebrate the win-win here tonight. You know, Crab Bay as part of Post-45, a beneficial use of Post-45 is going to be win complete. The only visible portion of that infrastructure investment above the water. And what a thrill to have her out in the location that addresses not only the concerns of the town of Mount Pleasant and this beautiful space, but also even increases the habitat for the birds. And what a fabulous opportunity it was for us to come together, collaborate, work through some very tough things. But we followed through on a commitment to you to come back when the time was right and have that conversation. And ultimately, it was through the dedication of professionals like Jeff Lavey, who is the chief of civil works and has ultimately been the lead on this effort, to be able to come back with not only a project that will address your concerns, but do even more than we ever expected. And what a thrill it was to represent the Corps of Engineers here tonight and our collaboration and continued partnership as a community partner. We've been doing this for 150 years. We're not quite as old as you are. But we are very proud of the record of service that we maintain. The honor that it is to serve and follow through on our commitments to the communities that we live in, that we work in, that we play in, that we go to church in, we raise our families in. And so it's a thrill to be able to share in that in my short time here. I mentioned Jeff Lavey, who ultimately is the guy behind that. He did the hard work, working with your team, working with your engineers, working with our contractors to get to the solution. And he will continue to stay the course through to the end, to when the Crab Bay is finally placed, and we're all celebrating together that milestone. And then, of course, Lieutenant Colonel Drew Johannes. So for those of you who don't know, the Army Corps of Engineers is commanded and led by military officers. We're army officers, active duty. What that means for us is we only get a short time here with you all. And it's a very bittersweet moment that on 16 July, I will hand over the mantle of this responsibility to Colonel Drew Johannes. He's joining us. And it's a great opportunity to just show that continuity of service that you see. Because even though you and I have been working on this for two years, and before me it was Colonel Paolo Zini, but what we've continued to do is make good on those commitments. And Drew will do the same.
And Drew knows exactly where it's going.
And what I look forward to, and what we all look forward to, is that continued collaboration. As we place this, that's an active construction site. We've talked about the importance of the safety of our communities, of the people who play and work in that Shem Creek and in that area. And so I look forward to the continued collaboration with the town of Mount Pleasant, with Eric, and with everyone else that has partnered with us, including DNR, Senator Graham, Congresswoman Mays, Senator Scott. They've all been involved in seeing a successful conclusion that will ultimately result in benefits for birds, benefits for the town of Mount Pleasant, benefits for the Low Country, South Carolina, and the nation. So thank you for letting us be part of this.
And let's thank our council.
Thank you all.
And for the pictures, if we could get Jimmy Bagel to come up and Randy Friedman, in typical Mount Pleasant fashion, two citizens vitally interested in Shem Creek, its well-being, its businesses, its natural resources. Y'all were with us, supporting the town, communicating with town council members. Thank y'all very much. This is a day we have looked forward to.
Should we like to look up, please? Thank you.
I don't hold on to the ordinance.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Tonight, we have an opportunity to recognize one of our employees for 25 years of service. Senior Sergeant Matt Salata, please come forward. Senior Sergeant Matt Salata joined the police department in June of 1996. And as is the case with all new officers, he started in the patrol division. In 1997, he was awarded Rookie of the Year. And in August of 98, he was promoted to Field Training Officer and was assigned to the Narcotics Unit. It was kind of a dual role, doing two jobs at once. In February of 2001, he was promoted to the rank of Corporal. He was awarded Corporal of the Year in 2001, 2002, 2004, 2006. He was promoted to Sergeant in January of 2007, was awarded Supervisor of the Year in 2010. During Matt's 10 years as Sergeant, he has supervised investigations, patrol, narcotics, the training unit. Currently, he is serving as a supervisor for the School Resource Officer Program. Over the course of his career, he has volunteered for a variety of extra-duty assignments. For many of his 25 years, he has served in the police department SWAT team, was served as a team leader. Most recently, he has volunteered to participate in the Swift Water Rescue Team and supervise one of the teams. So just a phenomenal career, very broad and amazing. Matt, I want to personally thank you for being the type of sergeant that all of our officers can look up to as a role model. Your dedication and leadership has been exceptional for 25 years. Thank you very much. On behalf of the citizens of Mount Pleasant, thank you for 25 years of service.
I believe that concludes the presentations. Item five is approval of the minutes from the May 11 Town Council meeting and the April 2021 financial statement. Do we have a motion?
Move for approval.
We have a motion to approve in a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The minutes are approved. Yes, sir.
I'd like to rise to obtain a sense of counsel. Members of council may remember that our friend Walter Brown III was here at our last meeting. And you might recall that he invited us to participate in a drive-by recognizing the 56th anniversary of his parents, Lois and Walter Brown Jr. I was lucky enough to be able to get out there. I had somebody drive me, of course. I couldn't drive there. But it was a fabulous event. I know other members might have been there as well. But I would like to obtain a sense of counsel to recognize Walter and Lois Brown on their 56th anniversary and the wonderful things they've done together with their family to make Mount Pleasant a great place to live, work, and play. And if there's no objection by council, I would like to ask the clerk to put together a letter to Walter and Lois, again commending them on their 56th wedding anniversary.
Absolutely.
Hearing no objection, I guess.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to say, you know, the apple doesn't fall far from the tree. You know, Walter's been up here talking about the tower over an old Mount Pleasant, and we've had a lot of good conversations about that as well. So like his dad, it seems that he's continuing in his father's footsteps. So good job.
Great. All right. Item number six is public comment. If you would like to make a comment, please come to the lectern, give your name and address, and we have a two-minute clock that will let you know when your time is up. Is anyone here for public comment?
Yes, sir. An excellent segue, as the first speaker is Walter Brown III.
Well, how about that?
Good evening, council. My name is Walter Brown III. I reside at 437 Benning Street. Thank you for those individuals who were able to attend our celebration on Saturday. And thank you, council, for recognizing my father and my mother. Speaking of the water tower, I come to just share a little information that I discovered last month. It is my understanding that on June 30th, the water tower, which was voted on in October to be demolished, will be disassembled. I obtained this information based on the BOZA agenda, where the lawyer for AT&amp;T received a letter stating that the equipment would be discarded on June 30th if it were not removed off of the property. So I became involved with this water tower maybe 25 years ago. This was the first flyer that we did. The tower is 68 years old, based on my calculations. And one of the things that we tried to do as a group was find a reasonable solution to have the water tower remain up and still be used for cell service. We were never able to have that discussion, but there's great interest still, increased interest from Representative Scott's office to the Architecture Department for Clemson University. So I would just say, it's my understanding it's coming down very quickly. And take your final pictures, and as you're coming across the bridge, glance over to the right, because that may be the last time you see it. As I said to you when I initially started this effort 43 meetings ago, old does not mean useless. The smokestacks in the city were deemed to be useless and old, but they're still up, and they've figured out a way to have that maintained. So God bless you, Tower, and thank you for your service.
Thank you all.
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to ask him. Eric, I thought when they came before us, we denied them demolishing that to put up the mountaintop. So how would, I can't understand how it got turned around. I had no idea that they had done this.
I think Mr. Nemora can answer that afterwards.
I'm afraid I cannot. It happened. I'm not prepared to answer that question. Okay. I remember when it came up. I don't recall the specifics. Surely there's a member of council or Mr. Brown himself who could answer that better than I.
We just need to be careful. It's not an agenda item.
Okay.
And, but there's answers for that, yep.
Chris Coleman?
I don't suppose the picture made it. Oh, awesome. Okay. Most of you know I've been here before you several times to ask that you do something to take the non-conformities ordinance and not apply it in Old Village because of the effects I believe it will ultimately have by eliminating the parking requirement. This picture you've seen a million times, every Christmas. Every Christmas time you watch this. This is, of course, George Bailey coming into, coming in from what he thought was Bedford Falls, but is now Pottersville. And what you learn by this, and the reason I put this picture up here, is because George Bailey was the quirk in what kept Bedford Falls being Bedford Falls instead of Pottersville. And so what I think of the parking situation and what's happened on the nonconformities ordinance is, that was our quirk. That's what kept us from having businesses running late at night. It's what kept us from having as many as 13 restaurants along this corridor, or having an all-night waffle house. That's what kept it from doing this. And so our quirk is gone. We don't have one. And it will change. It will take a while, but you will see something that will not look like Old Village anymore. And I need you all to look at it. I've circulated a couple of things. I will keep working with the planning department, and I'm happy to meet with any one of you, but something needs to be done.
Thank you, Chris.
That's all I have.
That's it. All right. Item seven is consent agenda items, but there are no consent agenda items. Item number eight is planning. New business. Ms. Reed, thank you. If you'll walk us through these two items.
Thank you, Mayor, council. I have two annexations for you tonight. This first one is 1583 Port Sh-
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve in a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. We're making it easy for you, Ms. Reed.
First reading ordinance number 21045.
All right. This next one is a .7 acre tract of land at Bent Oak Road, which is the entrance into Phillips Creek.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve in a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Reed.
Thank you.
Could have let you do that from your seat. Item B is old business. There are
no planning old business items. Item nine, committee action items. There are no committee action items. Item 10, council, new business. If staff will give us some information on item A1 is a resolution authorizing a law enforcement assistance and support agreement between the town of Mount Pleasant Police Department and the Lexington County Sheriff's Office. I understand some of this is best not discussed in public, but it is law enforcement-oriented. And if we have any questions that can be answered publicly, the chief is there. Do we have a motion to-
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve in a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously.
Resolution 21061.
Item two, a resolution authorizing an agreement for fire services between the town of Mount Pleasant and the South Carolina Ports Authority. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve in a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Resolution 21063.
Thank you to the Ports Authority for working with us on that. We appreciate it very much. Item three is a resolution to approve amendment of the agreement for development of a joint county industrial park by and between Charleston County, South Carolina, Colleton County, so as to include additional property in the town of Mount Pleasant as part of the joint county industrial park. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion to approve, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Resolution 21062.
Item B, old business, final reading, an ordinance to repeal and replace code of ordinances, section 30.35b, to clarify the council agenda process and to identify council members who make agenda requests.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve. Was that a second?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Corley, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion passes unanimously.
Final reading, ordinance number 21044.
Item C is executive session for the purposes of personnel. One, to consider applications submitted to serve on the Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee. Two, consideration of applications submitted to serve on the Board of Zoning Appeals. Three, consideration of applications submitted to serve on the Design Review Board. Do we have a motion to go into executive session for the reasons stated?
Shall I move?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Before we vote, council may take action on any item, including any subsection of any section listed on an executive session agenda or discussed in an executive session during a properly noticed meeting. Do we have, all in favor of the motion to go into executive session for reasons one, two, and three stated, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are in executive session. Go on in.
Thank you.
Let the record show, we have reconvened from executive session. No votes were cast, no action was taken. However, there may be motions resulting from the information that was shared in executive session. Do we have a motion?
I move for approval of Mr. Andre Bellegio for DRB.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion passes. Mr., how do you pronounce the last name? Bella? The last name is what?
I think it's Bella, Bellegio.
Bellegio, thank you. Bellegio.
I'm sorry. I didn't hear.
I wasn't sure if it was B or V. Bellegio.
B is in boy.
All right. Is there another motion, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a motion. I have a nomination for the seat number four on the BOZA Board of Zoning Appeals of Dwayne Aaron Butner.